All right, I think we're ready. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular Rhinebeck Town Board meeting of tonight, December 22. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just give me a second here, I'm not quite lined up. I would like to make a motion to approve our prior minutes of December 8th for our regular town board meeting. May I have a second?
Beat me to it!
Is there any discussion?
I'm just gonna abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
I have a question about it. There's a list of people that spoke with their written inputs that refer to in the minutes. Where are those? Are they available?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
It's on the web, is it?
It's not. It won't be on the web for a while, that's why I'm stuck.
Okay. What did you say?
It's all, it's all in the file.
We're talking about our public hearing. We keep a file, too, if anybody wants to examine any documents or statements. We have a file in the clerk's office.
As our old protocol, it's represented by seven individuals.
Right, I can include those, so what was that?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So moved.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. A couple of announcements and then we have a presentation. Town Hall will be closed to the public on Christmas and the day after Christmas. Most of the staff elect to take a holiday or a personal day on the 26th. Several will be working, but they will not be serving the public. They will be doing catch-up work. We're also closed on New Year's Day. The transfer station will also be closed on the 25th, Christmas and New Year's Day, but will be open instead on the 26th and the 2nd of January, the same hours, just the day after. Also, I'd like to announce with some sadness that Michael Trimble, our chair, former chair of the planning board, has submitted his resignation last week. So we want to thank Michael for all of his years of wonderful, dedicated service and we want to also, please invite anyone to apply for the planning board. We have two open seats. We'll need to fill Michael's seat, which we can't really fill his seat, but we do need to get somebody that expires on the end of December 2019 and then we have a full seven-year term, which goes to the end of December 2021. We'll be thanking Michael formally when we have time to put something together for him. Does anybody else have any other announcements?
I just wanted to, I'll be doing a resolution later on this, but for those of the people that are watching, that are gonna be watching for the whole thing. This is the 75th anniversary of this building. It was dedicated in 1939, December 19th. Built by the WPA, it was built to replace the town hall that was demolished when they built the Rhinebeck Post Office. So, here we are, 75 years later.
Still chugging along?
Yep.
Thanks, Alan. I have a presentation tonight from Kurt Quackenbush and Mary Krems on the swim team, the town swim team program. Thank you both for coming. Right, right there.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me here this evening. So, yeah, tonight, so my name is Kurt Quackenbush. I've been involved with the Rhinebeck Swim Team for, I think it was 13 years, I forget now. My family's been involved. My son joined when he was seven or eight years old. And tonight, I thought I would just tell you a little bit about the team. I see some faces here that I haven't recognized from being a part of the swim team family, so I thought I would kind of educate you and tell you about what the swim team does and the kinds of, and the people that it serves and so on. As I said, I've been involved about 13 years. Currently, I'm going on year six, I think, of being, for lack of a better term, the team manager, if you will. Really, that means I'm an active and involved parent. And I kind of organize the herd of the cats, or organized the parents and the families and help run the swim meets and make sure the team, the activities run smoothly. My son swam 13, started 13 years ago, and my youngest daughter, who will be 18 this year, will swim her last season. So, I've been around for, our team is, our family's been around for a while. Mary's here joining me today. She has younger children and they enjoy it very much and hopefully she'll be around for much longer, I expect. In the future, I believe Mary will kind of take over my role, so she should be here for support tonight. Let me tell you about the Rhinebeck Manta Rays. Now, I realize, as I was putting together some notes today, I really don't know the history. I've been around the team for 13 years and I know the team participated in the swim league that it's in for about 30-plus years. I think it's been around much longer than that. I really don't know when it first started or any of the history. Certainly, it's been around as long as the pool's been there. If someone knows, I don't know what year the pool went in, I don't know, but anyway, it's been...
Seventies.
What's that?
Seventies.
Seventy sometime, yeah. So it's been quite a while. So, the Rhinebeck Manta Rays, it's a competitive age group swim team and it's a member of the Duchess Ulster Swim Organization, the DUSO, or what we call the Do So League. And there are eight teams in the league. So there's Rhinebeck, Red Hook, High Park, Xena, Hurley, Rosendale, New Paltz, and Carhanson. Those are the eight teams in the league. The official mission statement for the Do So League is as follows, I'll read it. It says, "To make available to the greatest possible number of children, a program of competitive age group swimming and to foster sportsmanship between competitors, coaches, and parents." So although Do So is designed to provide a competitive program, none of the teams in the league are actually club teams that would feed U.S. Swimming, you know, the U.S. National Team, and the Olympics, or anything like that. So it's much more casual, but it's still competitive swimming. But my own personal mission statement that I impress upon our coaches, the parents, and the kids, it goes something like this, right? Is that I want to, we want to provide for our children an opportunity for them to stay active during the summer, hang out with friends in a structured environment, have fun, learn new skills, and be part of a team. And in that regard, I think we're pretty successful. I don't stress the competition, that goes with being part of the team and just the swimming, but those other things I think are important. So who does the team serve? As a town, sponsor of a town-operated team, primarily children from the town of Rhinebeck, but beyond as well. It's mostly children that belong, or that go to the Rhinebeck schools, and so being as that's the case, there's children who, from the towns of Mylan and Clinton, and we even have some from Staxford. But we have kids from other nearby areas as well, for various reasons. They choose to come and swim on our town team, from High Park, Woodstock, and even Carhanson. This past year, we had a family from Carhanson. A child from Carhanson comes swimming in Rhinebeck because they like our team and coaching and so on. So, kids from all over. This past year, in 2014, we had 85 active swimmers on the team, 85, ages five to 18. We've actually had children, there's no minimum age, actually, it's just as long as the child can swim the length of the pool, they join the team. We've had four-year-olds on the team before. This year, our youngest was five, which is still pretty impressive. For the swim, for the swim meet events and the coaching and practices, although we support between five and 18, well, as you might expect, they get separated. And for competition, for coaching, they get grouped in ages of eight and under, nine and 10, 11 and 12, 13, 14, then 15 to 18. So those are the age brackets that they train in and they compete in. The eight-and-unders are typically, and this past year as well, is our largest group. And, you know, I forgot to count, but probably, I don't know, maybe almost a quarter of the total, probably, are eight-and-under. Probably 20 or so, if you're eight-five. Maybe we're more. Some of the benefits and some of the things that we offer and why I think the swim program is an excellent program for our children in the community, first, just about anyone can do it, okay? The only requirement to join the team is that a child can swim the length of the pool. That's it. Anyhow, anyway, if they can make it from one end to the other, unassisted, they can be on the team. We say anyhow, anyway, if they just do go out to paddle, that's fine, that still enables them to participate in the freestyle event, and then hopefully over time, they will learn to refine their strokes and learn the others, you know, backstroke, breaststroke, and butterfly. No previous experiences required. And swimming is different than many other team sports. I'm sure we've all been involved with soccer and baseball and all kinds of things like that, but swimming, it's not only a team sport, it's also an individual sport. And the nature of swimming, since the events are measured by a clock, it gives children an opportunity to set goals for themselves and then to work and improve, to work toward and improve and achieve those goals throughout the season. And because they're part of a larger group around a team, they actually have a support system to support their successes and their failures throughout the season. Number two, fitness, obvious, the fitness benefits for swimming as it's low-impact, full-body exercise, and as a bonus, swimming is really a lifelong support, lifelong sport. You know, it's difficult for adults to go find a baseball team or soccer team. Well, there are, but, you know, some sports, you're only gonna play in high school, right? You have to play field hockey, some things like that. You have to play basketball, pick up competitively, not much after you go to high school or college. Swimming, you can do your entire life. Not many of us are gonna be professionals, but certainly can do it to be active. But as a bonus, kids that join swim team, they are, become stronger swimmers and therefore it's an important life skill and so they become safer around the water, about their life. Social aspects. It's super easy for kids to make friends with common interests that you're training with every day, right? So, along with the practices, there's swim meets where there's lots of cheering, a lot of participation from the other swimmers, participation from adults as well. And as a matter of fact, in terms of social, I find some of my closest friends now are those that I've met through the swim team. Unlike a lot of other urban sports where soccer, baseball, where we're sitting on sidelines, we're being actively cheering and supporting our team, but there isn't really much that you do at those to run a team, unless you're a coach or an official. Well, swimming is vastly different. There's huge opportunity for parent involvement, in fact, it's required. There's a lot of, a lot of work that goes on to run a swim meet. Just as a simple example, as a timer, we run a stopwatch, right? And it's a timed event, so we have to time everyone, swim their event, and we put three timers in every lane, time six lanes, that's 18 people at a time have to be on the pool deck participating. Not to mention, everything else goes on behind the scenes to record and keep track of all the events and everything, so it's really quite a bit. So parents really must be actively engaged with the swim meet and they have to work with other parents. So, as I said, I, it's been one of the most enjoyable pieces for me, and I don't only participate in this sport with my children, but meeting a lot of the parents, too. Self-esteem. So regardless of what skill level a child starts swimming, just about guaranteed they will improve in some way as the summer goes along. Some kids start out, especially the younger ones, they start out and they're hesitant to get in the water or afraid to start off the starting block, right? But through supportive coaching and encouragement from their teammates, by the end of the season, they're always up in the starting block, ready to join in the championship And everyone is a winner at different levels. There's always at least participation ribbons for every swim meet that they participate in, and at the end of the season, everyone gets a participation trophy, and they have some other special awards that the coaches hand out as well. But the feeling of accomplishment to get to the other side of the pool when everyone's cheering for you, and there is a lot of cheering. It's quite noisy around the pool deck. A lot of cheering, kids are yelling, cowbells, and parents are clapping and yelling, too. It's really, the feeling that the swimmers have when they go to the pool after working hard to get there is really, really something else. The Rhinebeck Manta Rays swim team program, it's pretty affordable, too, I'd say, so that's one thing, another thing going for it. Relatively inexpensive considering all that a child can get out of it during the season, right? For, it's pretty much mostly just the month of July, usually about five weeks, five or six weeks. They can practice a total of 12 hours a week and two swim meets each week. So that's quite a lot of activity that they can participate in, that they can have. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, swimming, it's a lifelong sport and so the Manta Rays team and summer swim teams in general are often the introduction to the sport for a swimmer, okay? Especially for our local kids. And then interest in summer swimming usually sometimes leads to participating in some of the club teams. Club meaning like a U.S. Swimming affiliate that might lead them onto higher, you know, higher levels of swimming. We have locally the Norland Duchess Aquatic Club, or ENAC, that swims at Clark College Pool, and of course, the Maersk Swim Club that swims at Maersk, and there's some others around the area as well. So, you know, interest in summer swimming leads to these in the off, I say the off-season, it's not the off-season for them, it's the non-summer swim season, the fall, winter, and spring. And actually, more recently, the last few years, participation in the Manta Rays really led to the creation of the Rhinebeck High School Varsity Swim Team Program, so boys and girls. It was through the action of some interested children who wanted to participate in high school sports, but found that, gee, my favorite sport is swimming, I can't do that from a high school. Okay, with those kids and their active and involved parents, really got the program started in the high school. In fact, this, the girls this, this fall, we had two of them actually made it to the state championship swimming. And I know at least one of them is swimming in college on a scholarship. So, we have some kids, some very, very active, very, very talented and competitive swimmers that go on and started in, at the Rhinebeck Manta Rays. Let me tell you a little bit about our coaching. Typically, for the summer, we have a head coach and we have three assistants. Typically, and this is, this is what has been, well, pretty much as long as I've been around, the head coaches are typically former, former team, former swimmers for the team, or if not for the team, at least for another team in the league. And they, as they age out of the program, and as college students come back and they coach for us. This past year, our coach, Kate Watson, she had just finished her undergraduate teaching degree and she coached for us. Actually, she assisted coaching for us for a couple of years and she became our head coaches past year. She actually didn't swim for Rhinebeck, though. She swam for the High Park Bear Cooties and she competed against Rhinebeck. But she's a, she's a local, local guy. The, the summer swim season, it's, I like to say it's fast and furious, really, it's really for the month of July, right? So the last weekend, June to the month of July, up until the league championships, which are usually the first Saturday of August. So it's really a fast season. And during that time, there are two dual swim meets a week, on Saturday mornings and Wednesday evenings. And the eight teams in the league, you know, we have a schedule that we swim against each team and the hosting responsibilities are shared, so half of the swim meets during the season will host, each team will host and go visit the other teams throughout the season. Although, so, and with, I'm sorry, so we had two swim meets a week and then practices are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And then we have two evening practices for those kids who can't make the morning practices. And that's a lot of, a lot of coach, coach swimming time. As I said, it's about 12 hours. The coaches encourage the swimmers to come as much practice time as they can or feel comfortable or want to. Of course, we know it's the summer season and people are on vacation or, you know, I just need a break, I don't want to go today. The coaches encourage it. The Do So League Championship Swim Meet, it's the really, it's culmination of the season. And there's, so the eight teams compete in one swim meet on one day. It's a very large, full-day festival-like event. There's upwards of some 700 kids or so that swim at this event, all eight teams. And the host responsibilities rotate around for the various teams each year. Last year, Xena hosted at the Ulster County Pool, which is near the Ulster County Fairgrounds. In 2015, Rhinebeck will be hosting, we last hosted in 2010, will be hosting at our pool. And the date will be August 1st, Saturday, August 1st. Going down through the schedule, it's usually the day after the championship swim meet, we have our end-of-season potluck banquet. Where, where the coaches, really, the purpose of it is, you know, everyone says it provides for the season. Also, the coaches present to the swimmers their participation trophies for the year. And the coaches discretionately hand out some other special awards to things like most approved in age group, rookie of the year, actually rookies, I think they do rookie in each of the age groups, the high points, high point scorer, best sportsmanship, things like that. So, so I told you a lot about what the team, about how, what happens during the season, what the kids do through the season. It is a town, I don't know, sponsored town, town team, and on that note, the support that we get from the town directly in terms of, like, financially, other than allowing the use of the pool, of course, and providing lifeguards while the swim team is using the pool, the town directly covers expenses for coaches' salaries, swim meet award ribbons, you know, the place ribbons, one through six, and the participation ribbons they get during the swim meet, and the end-of-season team awards. Throughout the season, there are other expenses. The, the team actually, we actually have a Rhinebeck Swim Team Booster Club, a 501(c)(3) corporation, and during the season, the parents on the team raise, raise monies, mostly through 50/50 raffles at the, at the swim meets, bake sales during the swim meets. And this money goes towards paying yearly expenses such as the league dues that each team pays, the championship swim meet expenses, which really are entry fees for that swim meet, and shelter for the day, because it's an outdoor all-day event, and the teams rent, you know, a big tent for the day. We also cover expense for supplies that we use, such as paper and labels and printer ink and raffle tickets and ice and cups and all kinds of other paper goods. In additional, in addition to occasional equipment purchases, such like stopwashes and batteries for the stopwatches, computer printers, seems every few years we have to buy a printer, software upgrades, and several years ago, we bought a laptop computer because all the results and everything is all maintained on a computer using software that all the teams in the league use. Let's see. And then, yeah, so I already, I already mentioned briefly, coming in 2015, the team will be hosting the championship swimming. It's really quite an event. When we did it in 2010, all the other teams decided that ours was the best. It was the best one, they wanted to have championships in Rhinebeck every time after that. And of course, I said, oh yeah, great, thanks, but no. It's a tremendous amount of work, but our facility actually is really quite conducive to swimming. For one, with the fields there, there's quite a bit of parking, which is a premium at a lot of other, other events we go, places we go to. And also just the nature of our pool. We have that large pavilion that was built a few years ago, provides a lot of shelter right there in the pool area, and the two smaller pavilions as well, so we have areas for the officials and all the scoring and all kinds of stuff on. The nature of the pool itself, too, just being a simple rectangle of six lanes, makes it very easy for officials to access all over. You know, a lot of these other pools have shallow, shallow swimming wells and a diving well, and just the odd shape makes it awkward. So there's a lot of things going for the pool of Rhinebeck to post-swimming, so I expect it to be another great year. And of course, it didn't hurt that we had spectacular weather in 2010 to that event. So I think that's, so really, I just wanted to give you some information, tell you about the team. Oh, you know, the thing I forgot about, 85 kids we had swimming last year, that's on the smallish side, you know, High Park was a little smaller, I think Xena was a little smaller. The teams really range, Red, New Paltz, for example, had over 200 kids. Last few years, they've been really enormous. Red Hook has well over 100, 150-ish. So we're kind of in the middle. In terms of our performance, last year was, last year we didn't do as well as I hoped we did. We were 2-4 for the season, two wins, four losses. The year before, we were 4-3, so we were better than 500. I think we were 4-3 the year before that, coming off of a slump for a few years. So we were increasing, hopefully, last year was just a blip, hopefully we'll be back more towards the middle of the pack. But that's not the main focus. Really, it's giving the kids the opportunity to have that, stay active during the summer. I think that's an important point. They really stay with their friends and it's really a close-knit group of kids. We get a lot of new kids every summer, all the eight-and-unders always come in, always sing on, just got a bunch of new ones. It's quite, it's quite challenging the first, first couple of practices with these new kids coming in, playing like the rest of them. Really quite exciting. Anyway, does anyone have any questions? Anything I can tell you about the team?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great program. How does it interface with the town, though? You say you hire a head coach, three assistant coaches. How is that done? Is that done through the rec committee?
Yeah, I should have mentioned. So through the recreation director, I guess, is that the title? I forgot. Chris Carey from last year, right? The rec director. She, she handles the hiring of the coaches. She consults me and other active parents, right? She says, Kurt, here are the applicants that applied for the job, what do you and your team think? And so we give her some input, but, you know, really, I guess you could say they work for her, the coaches, yeah. Well, I guess they're town employees, but she is their supervisor.
And I stopped down one Wednesday night and certainly looked very active and a lot of kids.
Organized chaos, yeah.
A lot of things. You said organized chaos. It seemed somewhat organized.
You can...
And it seemed fine, it was functional. But is it the parents who kind of run the thing, or how does, how does it get run?
Yeah. So, so there's a format, right? So everyone knows what, what goes on when, in terms of what events go on. You know, the official running of the swim meet is run, is performed by the officials. There's a meet referee and other different officials.
And are they hired by the league?
No, they're, they're volunteer parents. But they go through training, right? A lot of them are actually sanctioned for, to officiate at U.S. Swimming events as well. So, so they are officially kind of run the actual events, but all the organization that goes on behind that, yeah, it's parents. So folks like me and Mary and a cast of other folks really kind of organize it. And, you know, it's, it's really herding the children in groups as, okay, let's see, we have the eight-and-under boys are gonna swim the freestyle now, so, okay, boys, let's go, let's go over here and line you up. And so, yeah, there's, when I said there were a lot of jobs for active parents during the swim meet, and timers is one of them, there's all kinds. There's various chaperones and, and heat bench directors and, you know, there's all kinds of people with various jobs.
So does the rec director have meetings before the season starts with the parents, or how does it get organized?
I organize it.
Okay.
Yeah, the rec director, I, I work with the rec director to hire the coaches and after that, it's pretty much me and my team of parents that organize the rest of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Anything else I can tell you?
No, thank you so much for coming.
Great.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for having me here.
Yep, you are, they are, the Manta Rays are our only town team, our only town-sponsored sport.
Is it okay?
Yep, and we're thrilled to have you. My son enjoyed it, you know, the eight-and-unders, and for a couple of years, and...
I don't remember, did he?
Leo, one of the few Leos you had.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was great, yeah.
Okay, good.
He remembers Pisces.
Pisces?
Yeah.
I just want to say one thing.
Sure.
Kurt is, has been managing it all on his own and he has gotten a few of his parents to now step up to the plate and take over some of his duties, so, excuse me, I'm going to be taking over as town liaison. So you'll be seeing more of me. One thing I wanted to mention that Kurt didn't say is, the nice thing about this team, because it happens during the summer, a lot of the weekenders that come up either just on weekends or with their children possibly for the summer, I've gotten to know so many of them. They're not people I met at the school, my kids are seven, eight, and 10. And so it really has, the thing about the scene, it really develops a community beyond what some of us think of as community. Those that live in Rhinebeck send their kids to school and so forth. There is this other set of people that own houses, pay their taxes, and so forth. And so it really has been expanding of what we consider to be our community. So we really do thank you for your support and you'll be hearing us.
And thank you for your work. It's a great program, so thank you, Mary.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming. Good night.
Good night.
Committee and liaison reports, does anybody have one?
Couple of quick things. The tumbling program that we talked about is all set now, it's on, it's announced, it's gonna start in January, be on Saturdays. Tom Conley on the rec committee is reviewing the online registration... Tom Conley on the rec committee is reviewing the online registration progress that we're making. There's been some problems there, and he's really dug into that. The hoedown went really well, except we didn't have a whole lot of people because Center Claus didn't have a whole lot of people this year.
It was raining.
Linda Murray and Tom Conley were extremely helpful with that. The ice skating rink has been framed, but it's not cold enough to pour the water yet. So, um, somebody wanted to have an ice skating opening or something like that, but.
It's not freezing yet.
No, we need a week of sub-zero or some, something, sub-freezing. Um, the other thing is the, the letters are ready to go, but I think the board for the, the rec director.
I know, I know.
But we also probably should talk about shared services. This is an opportunity to partner with another town maybe on this position. But right now, with the holidays, it's best to go out after the first of the year.
You're talking about the civil service list?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Bruce, when you say the letters are ready to go, what letters are we talking about? This is to interview people?
Yeah, to, to see if the candidates on the civil service list are interested in interviewing for a part-time job that we talked about.
We got the civil service list from the county, and Bruce composed a letter, and we're going to solicit those people first.
Okay, yeah, no, I saw the.
You're talking about sharing services, Bruce? I think I just saw an email recently that the village is forming a recreation committee in Rhinebeck. So maybe that's, you know, one avenue we could take is to talk to the village of Rhinebeck.
Yeah, that's kind of different. We're, we're not sure what that means, yeah.
Okay.
Pardon me?
It's going to be skateboarding.
Yeah.
Alan, Joe, do you guys?
Yeah, a couple of things, but speaking about shared services, we really should think about projects we can do with other towns or villages, because grants will be available this year, up to $1 million. And, uh, we should put something in. So I think we all should think of what we can do with another municipality and try to get a grant for it.
You're talking about the county shared services?
Yeah, the county shared services.
Right, the $2 million in grants have been cut to $1 million for all of the 20 towns, eight villages, and two cities, and I believe they'll be sunsetted after this. So I think this may be the last year.
Right, maybe, but we should try to get in, whether it's the last year or not. We have been successful. We've gotten three grants already. The tech grant, the municipality grant, and the paver, and roller grant. So let's see if we can get a fourth grant. Shared services, I attended a meeting on the December 17. We talked about the paver and the roller, and that's proceeding. But the representative to the county legislature, Greg Pulver, was there, and he talked about the tax cap and, uh, the ability to get some money back from the state to our taxpayers. Apparently, we have to file something by mid-January, as I understand it, with the state controller certifying that we stayed under the tax cap. And then by November, I'm sorry, by June 15, we have to do another filing with a plan for savings for the next few years. And if the savings, I believe, amount to 1%, people will get back money. Apparently, the, each of us could go individually to file a plan, or the county is working up some kind of a plan that each of us can join if we want. I don't know which is better yet to do. The parameters of the county plan that we can opt into haven't been set yet, but we can decide that if you have a plan that you share with another municipality or with the county, you look at the collective, as I understand it, amount of taxes raised, and the 1% savings can come from the group. It doesn't have to come from the individual town, so that if somebody is short some, another town or part of the group can, uh, you can piggyback on their savings so you would qualify. So we are going to get some stuff from the county as to what their plan is.
I'll just speak to that. Something Shelley and I are monitoring, and I believe that we'll have our 1% savings on our own, because we've got our municipality grant, our tech grant with the village, we have the paver. I've also filled out paperwork. I attended a, you know, New York Association of Town Supervisors and Mayor's meeting, and they have an initiative for an energy audit, which will go towards the 1% savings. So we're already gathering all of our information, and I believe we'll be fine.
Right, so we may decide we want to go on our own, or once we study the county thing.
Yeah, we have to show about $40,000 and then save it.
There may be advantages. I just don't know yet, and we won't know until the county comes out with something.
Thanks.
Didn't we already submit something saying we were staying under the tax cap?
Yes, it's done. It's part of our filing.
Yeah, so I think that part is done, right? So you said that the first part, by mid-January, we had to submit something? I think we already did.
That may be, uh, maybe. The other thing I wanted to talk a bit about is affordable housing. The committee is going to meet on the 8th of January, and is going to meet with a representative of a development company to talk about possible projects with respect to affordable housing. The committee has also gotten, but hasn't discussed, the report of the Planning Board, and the, hasn't discussed. We've gotten some advice from our attorney, town attorney, on affordable housing law, and the committee will discuss that. And we'll get back either in January or February with some recommendations to the town board after they've discussed these two things.
Thank you, Joe. Alan? Historic preservation? You had a workshop, a nice workshop, maybe?
Yes, Joe was there as well.
Want to just bring us briefly up to?
We're working on it. It's a committee of four, working on the, on the proposed law. Basically, the historical preservation will be a committee.
Not a board.
Not a board. We'll start with that.
Start slow.
Start slow, evolve, whatever it has to be. Basically, the, it'll be an advisory board available to homeowners who have historical properties. One of the first things the board, the committee will do is identify historic properties in the town that would be covered by the law. And secondly, to decide what the criteria are for managing development of historic properties in areas.
I know, I know you guys had a long meeting and did a lot of work, so thank you. Did I? I have two things. I had a call on the 16th last week with the DEC, our engineer Weston and Sampson, and VRI, our Vandenberg Cove sewer operator. Bruce was working on something else for the county, but it, it was a good call. Basically, this is for the Vandenberg Cove sewer district. Basically, the DEC has accepted our 1125 report, and while they won't accept it in lieu of our Phase 2 and 3 planned for our original speedies permit, they're going to allow us to do all the fixes that we identified, and they're going to see how that goes. And if that seems to fix everything, and we really believe it will, they'll look at having that, accept that in lieu of the Phase 2 and Phase 3, which is an extensive relining and engineering. So they're trying really hard to, they're, they really want to work with us, and they're looking to get these fixes. We've asked Weston and Sampson to go ahead and file the report for 2015, and I believe that's due in mid, end January.
January 1st.
January 1st, so we're getting that done. And what the DEC has asked is that, since they're working with us, they'd like to see some good faith from the homeowners, and they would like for us, the town, to inspect the homes for sump pumps. We want to make sure that no sump pumps are filtering into the, the system, and that could be INI. We don't believe there are. So Bruce and one of the members from the Homeowners Association, Jim Baker, who's been working, both Bruce and Jim have been working really hard on this, are going to be reaching out to homeowners and ask for their help in getting these, these quick.
Actually, we're going to put our ninja suits on and sneak into the basement, since.
Don't even say that. There's no sneaking. But, so that's one thing.
Not the way I look.
Yeah, no.
In that connection, we were supposed to. We were supposed to do some stuff on cleanouts by December 20th.
It's been done.
That's been done?
I think there's still one that's hanging out, but we're pretty close.
And most of the other work is in the spring, and then we'll, we'll be able to submit that to the DEC. We have a schedule we have to stick to, and we'll look at the INI reports after that. In the meantime, we're working to, with the County Water and Wastewater Authority, to turn it over to them. So all of this is moving in tandem.
The one that's not done on the 20th, we think we can get that done shortly. Is it the homeowner we're waiting for, or?
Yeah.
That's the hangup?
Yeah. It's a sensitive area.
And you've done well with it. You've done a lot of good work.
We're getting there, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. The other thing is that I did hear back, and you all were notified on Friday, from the county, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development has weighed in on our referral for our proposed mining overlay zoning amendment. And they have, this will be in the folder, too, if anyone would like to see it. They have said that it's a matter of local concern, and they've attached some comments, and the comments are nothing surprising. Basically, they have said that the town board is considering a proposed amendment to the zoning code that would modify the boundaries of the existing mining overlay district to that of existing active mine sites as stated in our comprehensive plan. So they have recognized that this is what the comprehensive plan says we should be doing, and they ask us to be mindful that between 2003 and 2014, you know, their, their gravel mines in the county have been closing. So we need gravel and to be mindful of that. So we'll, also, I've been getting dozens of emails a week on this matter, that's why I'm mentioning it. Any specific comments, I forward to all of you. Any questions, like what's happening, I answer. That we'll be picking this up after the holidays and the new year, and I expect we'll be having workshops, public workshops, and, and our public hearing is open, and we'll be notifying the public to get more participation and comments. So we, we'll continue working on this. That's, that's it for the announcements. Anybody else? We can move on, resolutions? Resolution tab number one, I don't think we're going to bring it to the floor, Joe. It's the county grant for the paver. We're not ready on that, are we?
Right, we're waiting to receive from the county a draft agreement.
Okay, so this is, this, we don't need to take any action on this. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2014-377. This is tab two, for a firework, fireworks permit application for the fines. May I have a second? Any discussion? We had tabled this at the last one because it wasn't complete. We have our written acceptance here from the fire department, and we did get certified mail to all surrounding properties, John? Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do we have three ayes? Did I get a?
Yeah, aye. The only thing, I'm, I still am aye, but there's still the old name, just in the interest of making sure the information is updated. On page two, it says semi-completed application, Department of Cunningham, Town Clerk. We should just update our information, that's all.
Motion carries. Aye.
I just, I just want to, on the certificate of liability insurance, the certificate holder is this group. Should we be named the town on a certificate of liability insurance?
It says.
Which you're talking about, the resolution?
I have six of them, written, copied upon, insurance policy, just named, yeah.
Right, but is the town named? And I, I don't really know how that's done, should.
The motion passed. If you want to, you know, if you, this is something you want to look into early, and if you want to look into updating, please do.
Yeah, maybe we just ask, attend this to our insurance.
Well, how, I mean, look into updating. I mean, wherever the original template is that puts that letter out, it's just a question of going in and just taking out the name and putting it in.
Just follow up on it.
So who does that? Well, who does that? Who I follow up with, a clerk? Okay, so John, can you, you want to take care of that? Make sure that's updated, because you need to have the agency on.
Sure.
Thank you.
John, is it possible for you to just email the certificate to the Spain Agency and say, "Should we be listed"?
We are.
We are where?
Says additionally insured, certificate holder, town of Rhinebeck drew the fine, and Kristoff and Scott Hutchins.
It's all in the packet.
Right, above, above these, the endorsement box, down, down, down. Second box up.
Second box up, insured.
At the bottom.
Way down the bottom.
Oh, additionally insured, certificate holder, town of Rhinebeck, I see, okay, yes, you're right, Bruce. It's here.
Resolution, I'm going to move along here, number, I'd like, I'll make a motion for Resolution 2014-381, preliminary accounts payable abstracts, vouchers 1434 through 1510, 60 checks totaling $88,583.33. May I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2014-382, our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-383, reappointing to the zoning board of appeals, where we motion to reappoint Jeff Irish. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? For the public, this zoning board of appeals and the planning board meets before our first reorganizational meeting, and we want to ensure that they have a quorum. Jeff has graciously agreed to re-up for another five-year term, so thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks again, Jeff. Resolution 2014-384, appointing the acting chair of the planning board, Melanie Moore. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion for the public? Again, we had a, a unplanned for resignation last week. Melanie is the acting, is the vice chair and has graciously offered to chair. We're, we talked about it, and I think we decided to appoint her as acting. We talked about it, and I think we decided to appoint her as acting chair, to give ourselves a moment to figure it all out, and we can deal with it in reorg. I did speak with another, with Woody Dearsey, who's the senior member of the Planning Board, and he did not want to chair the Planning Board, but was thankful that Melanie stepped forward. So, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Melanie, thank you very much. Resolution 2014-385, authorizing the local law adoption process for the local law number to be decided of 2014. It's a local law that authorized a tax collection officer of the town of Reinbeck to enclose with the tax bills certain documents of public interest. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For the public, this is a boilerplate law that we want to pass so that we can include in our tax mailings, among other things, our emergency services, local law that we're going to work on. It allows us to put matters of public interest in the tax bill to save us postage. We get more information out with the mailing. And it's, there are parameters to what we can do. Is there any more discussion?
My understanding is we're planning to put something in, and this mailing that's going to go out in mid-January, and I think, Alan, what it is, is something that you've been advocating, and maybe, can you tell us?
Well, I mean, what I've been talking about doing is having the mailing describe the county law about labeling of houses and buildings for 911 access. The state of things in the town and in the village is pretty poor in terms of the way buildings and residences are labeled in driveways and that. So basically, the mailing would have a description of the law, what we expect people to do to label their houses or buildings adequately. And then, hopefully, a way to get the right kinds of signs. We've found, for instance, the town of Mile in the Longyear Fire Department provides signs that are adequate for $20, which, and we're going to try to do something like that here. And, and then basically announce that we're going to have fines for people that don't adhere to the law. Primarily because even if you don't call 911, if your house isn't labeled properly, it interferes with responders and finding the right house because of the way houses are numbered irregularly already. I mean, we don't go 1, 2, 5, 7, 9, and so on. They're, they're missing numbers often. And so if a house isn't labeled, it delays responding to the right house. So that's why I think we should have, we should have a law like that. In fact, that's what the county law says.
Alan, are you going to draft the thing that goes in the...
Yeah, I'll work with Warren.
Alan, we, Henry Campbell came to us at the beginning of the year. I think I gave you his, his two things. Is this a town law outside the village, or are we including the village?
We should, I should talk, I was going to talk to Warren.
Okay. And it has to be, in order, this mailing goes out in the middle of January.
It'll be at the next board meeting.
Okay, so, and we'll need to open a, have a public hearing, schedule a public hearing, and we either pass it then, you know, if there's no public comment, or hold it over. We may need a special meeting if we want to get it out with this. It's just something to be mindful of. So thanks for...
So we'll need to text by then, maybe.
Thank you.
We'll hope so.
Thanks for working on that. We should have it probably on for the reorganizational meeting. Any other questions? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Tab eight, Resolution 2014-386, hiring a part-time clerk for the Conservation Advisory Board. Jess Scott has been put forward. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Any discussion on this?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, there's a blank with the rate of pay, and I understand the inform Shelly is we still start people at $12 an hour.
Yes.
So that we should fill in. Second thing, I spoke with Ryan and Bill, who we brought with him, about the hours that the office would be open, and I suggested, and we were going to think about it, that we're probably talking no more than two hours a week for actual set office hours. That the amount of work will ebb and flow, and that the four hours really is a ceiling. It doesn't have to be four hours every week. The CAB, currently meets once a month on a regular basis. The notice is not a big deal. It gets posted on the bulletin board out here, and the regular meetings we just send to the newspaper at the beginning of the...
Shall we have Ryan take us through his, I think he sent out a letter to all of us. I don't know if you guys got it. It was a little...
Right.
Sorry. Let's have Ryan speak to us.
For the board, Ryan Dunn, chairman of the Conservation Advisory Board.
Thanks for coming, Ryan.
Oh, you're welcome. I believe because it stated in the resolution, and this resolution was passed over a year ago, more than a year ago, May 23, 13, that it would be not more than four hours of clerk work per week.
Right, but that doesn't say anything about the office hours being open, and I don't have to decide on that.
Well, because it's not more than four hours of clerk work per week, she could divide two hours for two days, and that would cover her week. Or if she, if there was a lot of work, it could be four hours on a Monday.
Now, are we proposing to use the second desk downstairs, the rec CAB desk downstairs?
We were hoping to have some access. I looked in the minutes, and from a year ago, there was an explanation of a closet downstairs.
We have, we've set up downstairs two office spaces, one for the zoning, who's going to be zoning and planning clerk.
Right.
That area could be available for a work share, although I'd like to speak with her first. And then there's a second desk in the big room against the wall that's for rec, and I think we said it could be rec and CAB. I don't think we can put a computer there because the room won't be locked, but you have, you know, that's something we need to discuss, and the best way to do it would be to discuss it on-site with the staff downstairs. And we'll certainly...
Sure, that's fine.
We have a filing cabinet for you, and we could carve out a workspace.
And as well, the CAB does have a laptop, and that laptop could be locked in the building zoning office.
Or locked in the filing cabinet.
Or locked in the filing cabinet, however, I mean, we're very manageable and able to work.
Okay. Great.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
Anything more for me, or would you like to ask, ask anything more?
Nope.
Okay, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. So $12 an hour, not to exceed four hours per week. Thank you, Jess. Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, even better, yep. Tab nine, Resolution 2014-387, tax surcharge proceeding on Bolin Becker Road. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Is there a second? For the public, we have a recommendation from Karen Hagstrom, our surcharge attorney and the assessor's office, to, to settle on, on a surcharge reduction on a, on a parcel map on 24 Bolin Becker Road. It has been reduced by $99,100. Is there any further discussion?
It says, are we giving money back, or how does the...
We're lowering the assessment, and I...
Going forward, well, with 2014...
I believe there will be a repayment, yes.
There'll be a repayment.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-388, tab 10, request for road name approval at the gardens from the Chazen Companies. May I have a motion? I'll motion it. May I have a second?
Second.
They have, they're opening three new roads there. They're B, C, and K, and instead of B, C, and K, in keeping with the garden theme, I think they're proposing Oakwood Lane, Rosewood Lane, and, and Sunflower Place, formerly known as Heather Way. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Tab 11, Resolution 2014-389, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with the Chazen Companies for the landfill reporting and sampling. May I have a second? For the public discussion, we, this, I had a verbal conversation with Chazen during budget time, and we verbally agreed to $6,450, which is what I budgeted. This is for $7,000. I talked to Russell Urbanmead today, and he agreed to change this, so we are only approving them for $6,450.
We've got an update to copy.
Okay, great. So I think that the lab fee, no, it wasn't the lab fees, I, he's honoring, is verbal during our, our budget season, so I'm asking you to approve this for an amended amount of $6,450. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2014-390. This is tab 12, for our 2015 rates for the Duchess County Sheriff's, Sheriff Services. May I have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, what is this, what does the sheriff do for us, and do we pay by the hour, or is this? Not familiar with our arrangement with the sheriff.
Yes.
If, this is contingency. If we need them, this, these are the rates.
Oh, so this is just a contingency?
Right.
So if we, we call them, or?
If something big happens and we need them, this is how they bill us.
Okay. Because I know, say, on fare days...
Not our problem.
Pardon me?
Not our problem.
Okay, so the, do, have we paid them? Do we know, we use them at all, or is this...
Not recently, no.
Not recently, but from time to time when there's something going on, we have, very rarely do.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-391, professional services for the town of Reinbeck, appoint proving billable hours. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
This was just a follow-up to our previous discussion about the information that was in previous minutes and was part of the town practice but not policy. And so the idea was to make it policy so that everybody would follow it, and it'd be a way to track it. So this is discussion we already had and agreed on, it's just formalizing that agreement.
So basically, it says that we can engage professional services for two hours, and that we should seek estimates.
Right.
And that estimates are only estimates. And how do estimates get approved before the board?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Now, there's some follow-up here that this is supposed to be sent, copy of this to the professionals. Is this something, John, you do?
Well, it says I have to.
Yes.
So I guess I do.
Just reminding you.
It's much appreciated.
Resolution 2014-392, appointment to the Conservation Advisory Board, Gary Kenton. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Gary Kenton has served as a member of the town CAB. His term expires on December 31, 2014. I believe you might be meeting before our reorg. Gary has graciously agreed to re-up, and so we will take him for another year if we'll have him, if you'll have him. Gary's also a village trustee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Gary. Any new business?
As I said earlier, this is the 75th anniversary, it was dedicated in the dedication of this building, and I have a resolution to present for us to vote on.
Would you like to read it for us?
Read it.
Thank you.
The Reinbeck Town Hall is completed and dedicated on December 18, 39, and this year was the 75th anniversary of this dedication. And as the building has served the town well over the years, as both the civic center and the town office facility, now therefore being resolved that December 19, 2014 be commemorated as the 75th anniversary of the dedication of the current Reinbeck Town Hall, and the government officials of 1939 be commended for their foresight and effort in planning and building this current structure.
Thank you. Nancy, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It is a lovely town hall. Is there any further discussion? Or Nancy, did you want to say anything?
No. I just want to take a minute to talk about the town hall. It's kind of unique in that in 1872, Reinbeck was undergoing a legal fight to bond the railroad to come through Reinbeck, and when that was defeated for some reason, they decided that they would use money to build a town hall. So we had an 1873 town hall, which was quite forward-thinking compared to other communities in the county. And then it was in 1938 that our neighbor Franklin Delano Roosevelt wanted to build post offices in Duchess County, and wanted the Reinbeck Post Office to be located near the Beacon Arms, and that's, of course, where the town hall was. So they arranged through the WPA to buy the old town hall from us and give us land here to build a new town hall. And so at that time, the town hall on Mill Street served as an office and civic building with a large auditorium, and was also the jail, and eventually the post office in town. In using the design of the 1700 Hendrick Kit House for the post office, and then the building structure was torn down, and they used brick for infill, as I understand it, in this building that was from the original town hall. So that was begun in the spring of 1939. It was the Agostino Brothers Building Corporation that dedicated, that built the building, and it was dedicated on December 19, as you've said in your resolution. The dedication was attended by 500, over 500 people, and featured Senator Allen Ryan, who was a resident of the town. And the rooms, as it was built up, we have a display over here, included a jail and kitchen and dining hall downstairs, and a room for the Legion, so that use of the building has changed quite a bit over the years. Senator Ryan... Senator Ryan dedicated the town hall to become a life center of the community where old and young can gather to enjoy themselves, to discuss and plan and shape the future hopes and history of our hometown. And at the dedication service, there were five past supervisors of the town, and today we have four living supervisors, I believe, Bill Allen, Don Quattenbush, Bill Dowden, Paul Ruby, and Steve Locke.
And Tom Trout.
Oh, and Tom.
Danny McGuire.
Danny McGuire, yep. And me, I'm still living, barely.
And of course, we're saying by the early death of supervisor day, you're trading. I believe that this building has served its function well, and I'm happy to have you recognize that. And Rhinebeck has done a particularly fine job of preserving its history and planning for the future.
Nancy, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Did you want us to, do we vote on this, or it's a-
Yeah.
Shall we? Let's vote on it. Any further discussion? I'd like to add that I think the jail was where my, the current supervisor's office is, was the jail, is what I've been told.
Downstairs.
No, in back of the clerks.
The jail was in the back of the court.
Great. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Some new business? Does anybody, I have a little new, oh, would you, would you have some new, would you have some new business, Ryan? Hi.
Good evening again, Board, Ryan Dowden, Chair of Conservation Advisory Board. I would like to submit a volunteer application for the re-employment of William W. Dowden IV. Due to illness, he was unable to get the application down before the agenda was put together for this meeting, so-
Ryan, are you, are you meeting before our reorganizational meeting?
The issue with that is the first Thursday in January is New Year's Day.
So you-
And so we need to, the board needs to readdress when they would like to meet. We had put the schedule together, and nobody, nobody called January 1st.
Okay, so you will, you probably will be meeting before our reorg.
I need to talk to the board, but it probably will not be January 8th. We might have to push it back to the Thursday, the following Thursday.
Okay, because, yeah, it's our plan to reappoint or hold over everybody. Usually do, you know, you would like us to bring this to the floor and reappoint him tonight? I'm happy to.
If the board-
Yeah, I'm happy to bring it to the floor for you. So I'd like to-
It's just very unusual, we usually get these things from the clerk. I don't want to make an exception.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Bill Dowden to the Conservation Advisory Board for another year term. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I don't have a problem with Bill, but I, as I said, my problem is just with the procedure. We don't usually do this. We usually get these in advance, so we can think about it.
Well, Bill's currently on the board. I think it's our policy that if a standing member wants to be reappointed, you know, we've all met with him, he's known to us, he's been a great volunteer, and I think there's a chance they could be meeting before our reorg meeting, so I, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. New business in speaking with Warren last week. He asked me to mention to you that we probably need to schedule a meeting with the, with the village to discuss animal control issues, the recent water charges that they had informed us on after we passed next year's budget, the hydrant contract, and any of the charges at the highway department, the labor charges for storing things. So we have issues that have been coming up again with the village, and he has encouraged us to schedule a meeting, which I could either do with Warren and another board member, or we could do a public meeting, whichever you like.
Since you mentioned this, I wanted to let you know, too, that I did speak with the village mayor about setting up a meeting, and he said his feeling is, at this point, they've already made their position clear, that, he said that if Warren wants to talk to his attorney, he can, but he doesn't see the necessity for having a larger meeting, that he thinks at this point, if the attorneys need to communicate amongst themselves, that, you know, he doesn't expect us to uphold something that's exclusively village law, but that whatever is in the ag and markets law, that we're responsible-
Are you talking about animal control?
Yeah.
Well, we have about five issues we need to iron out with them, so-
Right. But he, I'm just telling you, because I did ask if they could set up a meeting regarding animal control. His feeling is, at this point, if the town wants to, if our attorney wants to contact their attorney, but he doesn't really see the need, their board doesn't see the need for a full meeting with us.
Or to meet with us about charging us for hydrants that don't work?
No, no, I'm just talking about animal control.
Okay.
I'm strictly talking about animal control, because I'm liaison, and I was asked at a former meeting to set up a meeting with them, and I did, and that was the information that I got back.
Got it. But we have many issues to talk to them about. How would you like to handle it? Would you like Warren to reach out to their attorney? Would you like, would somebody like to have a meeting with me? I can call Heath, whatever you'd like to do. But thanks for that, yeah.
Is there a number of issues? I think we ought to, you ought to write to him and suggest a meeting as to animal control. I don't see why. That can't be brought up at the meeting, you know? You don't have a right, free speech right, to bring up-
Well, I don't think, I don't-
Anything. Warren can be at that meeting, but I think it should be you and maybe another board member. I don't think it has to be a public meeting.
All right, I'll write to them. I'll copy you. I'll, I'll list these issues, if there are any others, and I'll request a meeting, and we'll go from there. Okay. Any other new business? I'm just writing a note. Email policy, Tab 15. We can, I brought this up before, that in my dealings with the DOS, we have an email policy, and we have to start using town email addresses.
There's a way to do it. I spoke to Joe's support staff, and I think I'd get him on. The problem is, the current email provider we use is really inadequate.
The snail mail login, you mean? The squirrel mail?
Snail mail is the US post.
I know, squirrel mail, yeah.
I'm not going to go into details, but it just doesn't cut it.
Can we switch, can we switch this?
Yes, oh, yeah. So I've been talking to Northeast Computing, who runs a, a much more functional email system, uses Microsoft Exchange, which is basically the corporate standard, pretty much, in email. And they also already support a bunch of towns and other entities. So I could, what I propose to do is get them to give us a proposal that we can, we can look at, and just move Rhinebeck-NY.gov.
Town.Rhinebeck-NY.gov.
We saddled us with that email address, but anyway. I'm going to try to get over there first, and just use my email as a, to test it, and then, once I do that, I can move the rest of you over. The way, the way it can, the way it can work is, in Joe's case, he has-
I think even Wayne is having a problem.
Yes, in fact, I want to, yes, exactly.
The three of us are.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say. Before, before we do this, I mean, I was very gung ho and one of the first ones to get a town email address and use it, because I like the idea of separating, but I had one problem after another, to the point where there were several days on end, I couldn't get my emails.
How do you access it? Do you have to log in to access it? Do you do it on a web browser?
I did it on webmail.
So you don't have it set up where it delivers directly to your laptop or your computer?
No, I set it up on webmail. But I had so many problems with it, and the biggest issue was, that you have, I had to, like, wait for somebody who was with the tech committee to be able to get back to me, walk me through it. I was working, it wasn't always convenient during our times, and so then I would go days upon days without being able to retrieve my email and respond. And so, and I know that there are other people here who have had the same problem. I just spoke to Joan last week, and she said that she's had emails just disappear on her, or people aren't receiving things. So I feel like until we're confident, like, I don't want, I don't want you to just move yours over, do one test run, and then we all switch over. Like, I'd like to see a little bit of-
Well, the point is, too, is that we're not compliant with state law, and we're not FOIL compliant, so, and we have a, we have a town policy, we have to move to doing this.
Right, but we need to be sure that our, that our email system is working, otherwise it's all like-
Well, like I said, the thing that, the thing that we're currently using is, like, the Model T of-
You think we can get a new Prius or something?
And like I said, Microsoft Exchange is what we've moved to, and it's the, more or less, the corporate standard for email. And it already does archiving, it already does, they already do backups. It's the same backup protocol we're using for the town service here. And it's already been, I believe it's already been certified by the state as being adequate, because it's already used by other towns, so we get all that automatically, and it should work a lot better.
What do you think the timeframe for it is, Alan?
Probably be a month or two.
Early in the new year?
Yes, I was going to get started with them after, after they get done with the village.
I'll speak to Joan and see if she could compile a list of email addresses, town email addresses.
It's, do you use a browser to get your email? You don't use Outlook?
Only for my personal email.
Well, I should talk to them about that, I shouldn't use Outlook. It's much, I mean, I've been using mail application on my Apple stuff. I got, I got my town email on my phone, my iPad, and my, I didn't get my laptop, and it's worked fine.
Yeah, ditto for me.
Bruce and Joan, do you guys have any comments about it?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you have any comments about it?
Well, we need, obviously, we need a system that will work. I do think we are FOIL compliant, which just really requires us to be able to identify and respond to requests, so even though I'm not using the town system, I can identify all emails that come in that are town business and all responses that go-
But the town isn't, they don't reside on our server, so if someone comes to us-
I understand, I'm just saying, you know, you made a statement we're not FOIL compliant. I think we are, as long as we can identify the emails that we get a request.
The problem is the other side, which is, it's got to be on the town.
It's got to be on the town server.
Well, I don't know, does the state statute say that?
There's no such mandate, I'm aware.
What?
There's no such mandate, as I'm aware. I know a lot of other people who have, they're either county or town employees, and they use their personal email address, too. I mean, it's not a state mandate, as I'm aware.
Well, we have, we do have a local policy.
The local law we passed is just supposed to be-
Yeah, we have a local policy that we passed in, in 2010.
Yeah, no, I read it, I noticed that I wasn't at the meeting, she was not at the meeting, and I did have subsequent conversations with the supervisor about the problems it raises.
You, you were very upset with this-
Yes, I was.
Back when we, and this was the third time we did this. I, just so you know, Alan, I'm on my seventh pass at this with, with the town ID, and eventually it just gets to the point where-
What do you use?
What do you mean, your seventh pass with what?
I've, I've used town IDs seven different configurations since I've been here.
What are you trying to use, webmail, or you go?
Whatever Clivon or what's it, Clivon told me to do, that's what I did, and I forwarded it to AOL.
Oh.
You know, and I can't get back into it.
Yeah, okay.
Once, once I set it to forward, I can't get back into it anymore.
Are you guys Mac users at home?
No.
I'm not.
Because our, the Mac is so easy.
I worked at IBM for 35 years.
Of course, you're not a Mac, of course.
Well, I've worked in IBM for 30 years, I went-
Ran screaming to Mac.
It was like taking a stone out of my shoe.
Thank you for that, Alan.
So we need a functional system.
Yeah, that's really my, my beef. Like I said, I signed on immediately to get a town address, but-
I will personally train you.
I don't need training, I need the, I need the system to work. It wasn't my, it wasn't my not knowing how to do it. I mean, I'm pretty adept at using-
You should get an Outlook and just have a separate, a separate mailbox for the town stuff, and it'll, Outlook will keep it separate, even Outlook Express will keep it separate.
So we'll take a run, see how well it works after it gets set up, and, yeah.
Okay.
This is a challenge right now. You're going to be blast, but not leave.
Your mouth. Investing Cemetery Trust Fund interests, Tabs 16, 17, and 18.
That's a lot of information Warren sent us, but you guys may recall, we had this conversation numerous times, just in discussion, discussing the cemetery trust funds, and it seems that we could be investing some of the interest, at least on one of the funds, and I think it would be a good thing for us to do, it would be beneficial to the town. And so Warren sent this information, and we actually have a local financial person, Vicky Hack, who is willing pro bono to look into this and advise the town on investment options.
I just got an email from the Office of the State Controller with investment guidelines. Did I forward that to you?
No, but if you would, that'd be wonderful, and I can forward it to Vicky.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, good.
They do have guidelines that we-
Yep, perfect. Because Warren sent this to me, I sent it to Vicky. Warren said to Vicky that if she had any questions at all, she could contact him, but she's willing to advise us for free on how we could invest the money, and I'll send her that information, too, so-
How much money is, is this the $200,000 account, the trust account?
It's a, it's a roughly between one and 200,000.
I mean, we're making nothing on it in interest, so-
When you say we're making nothing on it, I assume the bank pays something, but all interest rates are very, very low.
I think we're making a third of a percent?
Well-
A quarter of a percent?
We should be able to do better than that.
We have, the guidelines for investing are really conservative.
Five, eight, nine, 10.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes three, four, or five.
Five percent, yeah.
So it's, it's free work-
Better make a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, it can, you know-
You can decide, but I don't think there's any great bargains out there in-
Well, let's see what she comes up with.
Balance of safety with, with yield.
That's it. So she's, she's going to look into it.
That's nice, she agreed to do it.
Yeah, it's wonderful. I mean, it's, you know, she's volunteering her time to do it, it's great. She has expertise.
Has expertise, she's a-
Yeah, I was really appreciative that she, she would do this for us, so.
Dog kennel IMA with Redhook, Tab 19.
So this goes back to our discussion a while back about the, and it's also, it's interesting, because Joe had mentioned earlier, shared services, which is true, we should be looking at more shared services, but this would be sharing services where they would cover our daytime animal control, they, we would use their dog enforcement officer, animal control officer, while Roger's working full-time, and in exchange, they could use our kennel for their, some of their dogs, which they've been doing. I mean, this is just formalizing what they've already been doing, and I think formalizing it is a good thing for, for both us and the town of Redhook, because it is a shared services agreement, and it certainly helps us avoid the very large cost of contracting out daytime hours, which we all saw, some of the quotes that came in for kennel fees.
Did I, did I send you the stuff from the-
It's very expensive.
$21,000 Hyde Park? Did I send that to you? Because it was a round robin recently-
Yeah, you did.
With the supervisors.
But, you know, so this is a huge savings to us, it's a win-win situation for both us and Redhook.
That's great. Would, would our animal control officer have to cover them nights and weekends, or?
They already cover for each other now. This is just formalizing what they're already doing. They have a wonderful agreement together, they work very well together, it's been working.
Now, and this would only cover the town and what we have to do for ag and market for the village, but not the village's animal control?
Anything that's exclusively village, the village knows that they're responsible for, so this would cover what we're legally responsible for.
Right, and have, have you sent this to, have you sent this to Warren?
No, no, because I just got, I wanted to bring it before the board first, the attorney for the Redhook Town Board, Brenda sent this to me.
Because I didn't see a clear statement that their person would cover us during the day.
It's in, well, if you needed to be more clear, that's something I can go back to her with, that's not a problem. This is just a draft she sent based on our conversation about their needs and our needs.
Right, I think.
But the first one, if you look at Exhibit A, Plan for Shared Services, number one on the top says Dog Control Backup. The Redhook Dog Control Officer and the Rhinebeck Animal Control Officer shall be authorized and directed to provide backup services for one another in the event of absence or conflict. Such officers shall make arrangements with one another for such coverage. Each Dog Control Officer or Animal Control Officer or Dog Warden, as applicable, duly appointed by the town of Rhinebeck or the town of Redhook, is hereby authorized to enforce the provisions of Chapter 63 of the Redhook Town Code entitled Dogs, Chapter 63 of the Rhinebeck Town Code entitled Dogs, and any regulations adopted pursuant thereto, and the applicable provisions of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law. This authorization shall be in addition to and not in limitation of any, of any other authority provided by law.
Right, all that, I interpret that to me.
That's not clear to you?
No.
Okay.
Because that, that says they're going to work it out among themselves.
Well, they kind of have to, because if.
Well, if, if we're going to give free kennel space, I'd like them to say they're going to cover us during the day. Doesn't say that, if that's the deal.
Honestly, it's what the hours of coverage are, and they wouldn't let them work it out.
Okay. We'll cover daytime hours.
Right, because I see.
Monday through Friday, whatever it is, 8 to 6?
Yep. I'll find out from Roger what the date, what the exact times would be.
Right, because there used to be a fee schedule, which is crossed out, so I guess they're going to provide this service.
Right, as a shared service.
Because we're not going to charge for.
The kennel.
boarding their, their kennels, so.
Did they say that they would, who takes care of the animals once they're in the kennels?
That's in here, too. They, they do.
I didn't see that, okay.
They're responsible for, that was in here, too, yeah.
So you're going to refer this to Warren and maybe just tighten up these points and?
Oh, sure, yeah, I wanted to bring it here first.
I think it's great, yeah.
I do, too, I think it's wonderful.
This could go towards our shared services savings to get our refund.
And it saves us a lot of money on 9 to 5 coverage from, I mean, the S P C A would be astronomical to cover 9 to 5.
Well, presumably, our animal control officer is supposed to somehow provide coverage, I guess.
Well, he has, he's been doing it, he has, he's been doing it like this, but it's been informal up to now. There's been coverage.
Well. No, we haven't.
That'd be good, we'll formalize it, we can put the calling information on the website, people will know.
And I'll let Brenda know, too, so.
All right, so you'll get this to Warren with the?
Yeah.
And we'll get it, work on it in the new year. Thank you. Is there anything else on this, or any other new business? Is there any public comment on any non-agenda items or any new business? I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the financial remuneration and employment history of a particular person and matters leading to the appointment of a particular person.
Is it all of those?
Yep. What I just said is what it is.
So pretty much reads like the entire?
No, I said the financial remuneration and employment history of a particular person, and I said matters leading to the appointment of a particular person. That's what we're meeting about. May I have a, a second?
Second.
I do not think we will be.
We may.
We might, we will be coming back to take an, we might be coming back to take an action, so, thank you, we'll be back to adjourn. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, may I have a second?
Second.
Happy holidays, thank you, we'll see you in 2015. Thanks, everybody.